Don't start singing.
We're a couple of meetings behind on the minutes, so believe it.
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right, just make it clear.
Yeah, there is, um, there's a special meeting on the agenda right now. So there was, um, just the regular September ones that were missed. And those actual ones, so those will be on your next agenda.
Okay.
Have you guys all met Calla?
We have not, but we'll, we'll make time for, plenty of time for introductions. Glad to have you, though, I'll say that now. Your role as recording secretary for us is appreciated and valuable. So Brown knows right from the beginning.
Since our secretary can't do it.
He's incapable.
I guess I should grab a copy of the agenda. Is it in these packets anywhere?
Uh, that's the staff report about the visiting.
Oh, where is the staff report?
Where is this?
Um, I'll grab some.
Yeah, I don't have one either. Do I? See one, do you have one agenda or not?
No. No idea.
There's enough for the public, I think we're running low. Unless there's a much bigger turnout.
They're gonna storm with three minutes to go.
Right, I'll pile in.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
You mentioned that I would teach you an audio. If anybody would know, you'd know. What's going on with the bridge, over Walton? I live under a rock, so I don't.
They're doing maintenance.
Just maintenance?
Yeah, I believe so.
They're not making them wider or anything?
I think they're prepping it for the ability to make it wider.
We get the grant.
I know it's got a weight limit on it, and it's not, you know, the best bridge ever.
No, it's not the best bridge ever. But I think they are, they're, they're doing pre-work for the widening as well.
But not for more, but for pedestrian traffic?
For pedestrian.
Not for vehicle traffic?
Correct.
Yeah. Well, it's wider than the older was. I can testify to that, because I was riding my bike across the old trellis.
Oh, it was a exposed beam, an old trellis one?
Oh, yeah, and it was like a, about a lane and a half.
Model T width?
If you owned your bicycle, you want to make sure there wasn't a truck.
It's a pretty valuable bridge, because when it's not available, it makes you realize how valuable it is.
Yeah.
All right. There's only so many, like, between here and, there is no bridge between Buchanan and Berrin Springs to cross the river. And then the only other bridge between here and the state line to cross the river, you got US 12 Bridge and 31, that's it. Yeah.
Well, forever in this paddock.
Go, go west.
It'll be our moat. Thirty seconds.
Put that thing in the way.
Yeah, I know it's my bad.
Man, for a public hearing, this is not a very big turnout. Kevin, you were a city resident?
No.
You're not, you're not, right? So you guys are our two non-city resident members, okay.
We're not, we're quiet. We're special.
You guys are special. You actually know something about, uh, development, right?
We're trying to get around it. We're building new houses. This is not a case.
Can't fake it right here. Call to order, this public hearing of the City of Buchanan Planning Commission. At this time, uh, do the roll call, please.
Parker?
Here.
McDowell?
Here.
Madison?
Here.
Le, Leeds, sorry.
Leeds. Very good. Here. That's a tough one. It's almost like the sports announcers who need the phonetic, like, in parentheses after our names.
Okay, try for nothing.
Right, you can relate. All right, the purpose of the public hearing is for the planning commission to review an application submitted by Joe Carter for the rezoning of property located at 101 Terracoup Road from the existing R1 residential zoning to C1 neighborhood commercial zoning. I'll now, uh, read the rules for the public hearing. A public hearing is designed to receive comments. Before I do that, bear with me one second. This is a public hearing designed to receive comments on the review of an application submitted by Joe Carter for the rezoning of property at 101 Terracoup from the existing R1 residential zoning to C1 neighborhood commercial zoning. Only comments regarding the subject will be accepted. All persons wishing to comment shall be given the opportunity to do so. Person addressing the planning commission shall stand, state his or her name, and direct their comments directly to the commission. In the event a large number of people wish to comment, the chairperson may announce that each person speaking shall limit his or her comments to three minutes. Each person shall have an opportunity to speak before anyone is allowed to speak a second time. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, terminate comments which are unreasonably lengthy or unrelated to the subject of the public hearing. When the chairperson observes there are no further public comments, he or she shall close that portion of the hearing. The order of presentation shall be a presentation by the applicant, then a presentation by opposition, followed by an opportunity for applicants rebuttal to any oppos- opposition, and then closing of the public hearing. So with that, we'll proceed with a presentation by the applicant.
Good evening, uh, thanks for taking the time to meet with us again tonight. So, as we discussed, and I'll just kind of do a little rehash what we talked, sorry, Joe Carter, 217.
Thank you.
Uh, property owner. One thing up front, the taxable statement or diagram of the property is labeled 101 Terracoup, but this would be for the other portion of the property, 421 West Front. I just wanted to get that kind of square up front. It's two properties on, on one, on two addresses. I added that to the paperwork for this time as well, to just kind of put it in parentheses with it, so we were aware. So again, uh, as we discussed, uh, it was in August, a couple of months back, uh, the first meeting, we, uh, Tim Caravan, this is Tim, if you remember from the last meeting, we had talked about, uh, moving a commercial kitchen or restaurant into the old commercial side of the building. That half is our rent at home, uh, the 101 Terracoup address, 421 West Front is the, the commercial side of the property is purchased. Tim is looking to, we're looking to move, uh, the commercial kitchen and the walk-up or drive-up possible restaurant in the, in the property as well, too. The size and structure of the building, it's sound, it's, it's well-equipped for the process of it. The goal would be to work over the next few months, get the restaurant up and going. Tim would have a place to make his food for catering, and also sell out of there for a limited time throughout the day, uh, when he chooses, based on how well the business is going to work with the crowd of folks moving into the town. Uh, long-term goals are obviously to establish another, another place to eat in the city of Buchanan, with the limited amounts that we have now, uh, food trucks going out, we establish a business in there. And Tim would make his food in there as well, too, as we, as we go forward. Clean up the outside, um, make it a better-looking property, a little more harmonious to the area, I guess you could say. And in the long-term goal as well, too, is not to encroach or interrupt anybody else moving around that portion of the side of town. We set up a, went up and matched the parking lot or parking plan, set up a, kind of a drive-through plan as well, too, as, as if Tim was making it so there that cars could come and go without causing any traffic stoppages, things like that. And again, that's the, the long-term goal, to make it a good-looking place, another facility to eat at in the city of town. Improve the property value of it, so to speak. And again, it's just a rehash from last time, and we'll discuss it next.
Yeah, if there's anything pertinent you want to put in the record related to this regarding kind of your plans for the site, anything like that, uh, you're welcome to.
No, nothing specific yet, it's kind of, it's kind of waiting on the go-ahead, uh, to see, to see if, if we can, and then, and, of course, Tim, he can answer any specific questions. He's going to be kind of, uh, in charge of that as a setup and roll, as we look forward.
All right. Thank you. Um, next, uh, we'll ask if there's any members, uh, present who, uh, would like to offer comments in favor of the applicant's request. If you could just come forward, state your name and address, and, uh, thank you.
Uh, Richard Martin, 920 Chippewa, in Buchanan. Uh, I know that that place used to be a gas station. Uh, I think this would probably be no more impact than it was when it was a gas station, and we do need a place to eat in town, so I'm in favor.
Thank you. Either of you at the back table like to speak? All right. If you're in opposition, I'll give you, uh, another opportunity. If you're in favor, this is your time. Uh, okay.
Um, Fran, here is 16398, Ray Merson, actually, I'm not of the city, I'm of the township. My sister is 603 Polis, which is right down the road from them. We would be in favor of it, because anything to clean that corner up would be great. My concern is, how many parking spots does that parking lot have? But I still say we're in favor of it. I'm older than dirt, so I know when it was a grocery store, gas station, the whole shot, and you are too, so you know that. Um, and it was a wonderful. Yeah, I'm pointing at you.
It wasn't me.
I hope she pointed at the guy behind me.
So, yeah, um, any place that has a nice spot to just grab some food and eat, we're all in favor of.
Thank you. All right. Well, unless you're opposed to your own project, which I doubt, from over here in the Steelers, um, everyone else has been accounted for in the room, so appears to be no one here in opposition. Regarding any emails, phone calls, written correspondence, did the city receive any, either in favor or opposed? Okay, thank you.
And for the record, notices were sent out, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And published.
Thank you.
Uh, the notices go to any owners within, was it 300 feet of the parcel?
300 feet, correct.
Do you happen to any ballpark, like, how many notices went out?
Thirty-six, I think.
Thirty-six notices, okay, very good, thank you. With, uh, having there be no need to offer any rebuttal comments, um, I'll give you kind of, before I close the hearing, any final thoughts you'd like to share that maybe you missed your first time through?
I don't think anything specific.
Okay. There'll be more discussion when we take this, uh, matter up in a regular meeting. Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, close the public hearing. We're going to move right into our regular meeting at this time, so I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the City of Buchanan Planning Commission for November 9th, 2021. With that, we'll stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the roll call again, please.
Parker?
Here.
McDowell?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Leeds.
Here. We have a quorum?
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to approving the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have two items, potentially two items that we might want to add.
Okay.
Uh, one is, I have the minutes from our last Trail Committee meeting. I can make those, simply make those part of the packets if you wish, or I could do a small recap. There isn't a huge allotment of business, but I think we at least should include the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
As our, you know, as a Trail Committee, as a subcommittee of our planning commission, now as you're well aware of.
Yeah, I think that, uh, having the subcommittee reports incorporated into our agenda is, is excellent. Where do you, where do you think that we should insert those?
I'm sorry, I printed out six, uh, six of the minutes, I'm glad to share those with everyone.
Okay. As far as the agenda goes, should that be, um, its own standalone item, uh, under new business?
Usually, uh, subcommittees are on their, a standalone item, I believe, usually after public, after approved minutes, isn't it?
I'm fine with slotting it in there.
Yeah.
Okay, so it'll be a new number eight, and everything else will subsequently add one. So it'll go in between approved minutes and old business.
Yeah, committee reports, yeah.
Do you want to do, uh, have a motion to, well, you said there was a second thing, so let's hear that one.
Yeah, additionally, there's, uh, Mr. Martin is here, he provided an application to join the planning commission several months ago, and I believe he wants to speak tonight, is that correct?
Right.
I don't, I'm kind of, uh, at a disadvantage here, I don't really know what protocol is. I was asked to come to this meeting to join the commission.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll do whatever you want.
Right, so there was some correspondence between myself and Heather Grace about this topic. Um, at our last meeting, um, I apologize to those in attendance that during the clerk transition, taking up action on those applications, um, didn't make it in the last meeting, I asked to add it to this, and I, I think it got a little lost again. But, um, I absolutely think we need to add, um, making a recommendation on the applications to the meeting. And as part of that, we'd like to invite you to, as an applicant, to kind of share your interest in the commission, your bio. Just, if you feel like it, if you don't want to and just want to observe, that's fine, too. But, um, so glad to see that you made it tonight.
Thank you.
Do you want to add that on new business, then?
I believe that would be an item B, then, under new business. So, recommendation. Recommendations. On planning commission member applications. Okay, so, um, I'll entertain a motion, I think we can do both things in one motion, uh, to add a new item eight and renumber the remaining. That item eight is for, um...
A report?
Report, because our subcommittee report, or committee, well, just call them committee, they're not subcommittees, committee reports. And then also, under new business, a new B, which is recommendations on planning commission member applications.
I would make said motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have, um, did you catch those?
I didn't catch a second.
I'll, I'll second.
Be, Kevin?
The dirt guy, older than dirt guy.
Okay, so we have a motion with support to adopt the, uh, agenda for tonight's regular meeting with the, uh, additions that we previously reviewed. Further comments, discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. All right. That takes us on to, um, any public comments on the agenda items. So there were copies of the agenda at the door, and then we made a few amendments, which you just heard. So with that, um, anybody like to offer any comments, only on the agenda items only at this point? No? All right, hearing none. Let the record reflect that there were none. Then moving on to approving our minutes. Um, I think at this time, we'll take a little pause on the minutes, since it's related to our clerk. Maybe, uh, go ahead, have you introduce yourself a little bit? Um, and then you can let us know about the situation with the minutes as you start to catch up in your new role.
So like I said, my name is Calla Langston, okay? It just started about two weeks ago, um, getting adjusted to things, there were some things that were missing, um, we lost in transition between me and the former clerk, um, about some minutes. I did get the special meeting minutes, but I did not see the September 14th regular minutes until today. Um, I was able to find those and locate them. Heather has, she was the last planning commission, she had left you guys a copy for those minutes. Those were not able to get onto the agenda either. So, the regular September 14th and the October, um, minutes will be on your next agenda, if you want to approve the special meeting minutes today.
Okay. So we have some minutes that are a little bit older that will appear at next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And, you clerked before, uh...
I was deputy clerk for the past four years at Lincoln Charter Township.
Okay.
Um, definitely new to the agenda and for, just getting used to it and learning how to, I've taken minutes before, but I've never been one to be right up front and with you guys, so...
Did you type up these minutes?
Uh, which, no, Heather did.
Oh, Heather did these.
She was at the last one, so, go get the new ones, will come from me, so...
Okay. Well, welcome, like I said, uh, the clerk in Buchanan serves as the recording secretary for the planning commission. We have a secretary, a little more of a ceremonial position, uh, but if there is any technical stuff around record-keeping, we have, do have the officers here. Um, we got Ralph as the secretary, you've got Kevin as the vice-chairperson, and myself, that's the chairperson. Sean is our ex-officio member from the city commission. We currently have, uh, it's supposed to be a seven-member planning commission, we have some vacancies at the moment. So welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, uh, take a look at our minutes of the special meeting. I read through them earlier, and I didn't see anything that required corrections.
No commas missing?
No, I don't know about that. I did see in the last paragraph, there's a comma outside of the quotation mark. Not sure what the proper English is these days, but...
They did spell my last name wrong in a couple of spots on page three, they've got Mac on it.
I like that better, actually, you ought to change, you ought to consider changing it. Mac.
That might be easier than changing the minutes.
We'll just start calling you Larry.
So exactly where were those, Ralph?
Uh, middle of the page, um, page three. Right above commissioners' comments.
I'm just looking at that one. Are you looking at the giraffe?
I am, is this not?
Okay. Those ones aren't going to be approved until next week.
Oh.
She's just leaving your copy to look at.
Oh.
These ones are, is for the special meeting, which was in the package.
Okay, I...
Which you don't have in front of you.
We don't, I don't think we have those in front of us. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, usually the packets are super-thick, and, um, it's not that practical for us to print at home.
Okay.
There's some items, and we can talk after the meeting, that's nice to have, uh, prep for us, thank you.
This is one copy.
I found a spelling, things is miss, Ruben, it's pigs. I found a misspelling.
Well, this is like grading homework, so if you find mistakes, we can turn this back in, and they have time to fix their errors before they submit it.
I'm looking for content, not spelling. Especially where I see my name.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Thanks. Did they get it right on this one? I think it needs an A, is it, yours has an A in it, or is it MC?
It's MC capital D, yes.
All right, so it's good.
Okay, down at the end of page three, it says that I still own a old carbon building, I don't own that anymore. That was sold last March 2.
Those are not, are those the minutes that we're all looking at? Those are not the minutes we're looking at?
Oh, these are the minutes from before, though, this is, I'm looking at October 12th.
We're looking at, this is the one that she said we, uh, hold off on, if it's a draft, it's not ready for action yet.
Yeah, this...
So we're only looking at this one, uh, special meeting.
September 27th.
Okay, sorry. I've got to circle that, or I'll forget it.
Yeah, if, um, that was still, you know, time well spent, we can give this back, and any corrections before, there before us for approval.
Does look good to me. I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 27th meeting.
So you have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted of the special meeting from September 27th, is there support?
Yes, self-support.
Okay, we've got a second. Any further discussion, comments, should we vote on it? It's going to be a voice vote, all in favor of adoption of these minutes from the special meeting and planning commission from September 27th, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried.
I didn't vote because I was not there.
You weren't present.
Um, it's kind of our custom that at the end of the meeting, I'll sign the official copies. So we'll do that after. All right, next, that takes us to, um, the committee reports. So Ralph is our representative on the Trail Committee, I'm on the, at the moment, was our designated representative to the, uh, for Buchanan Tree Friends. I think they meet tomorrow. So, uh, I don't have any minutes or any report to make on mine, so go ahead, Ralph, for your... Okay, um... We'll go ahead and do Ralph, and then, uh, you can let us know at the meeting, I appreciate that.
So yes, I've, uh, I passed out the minutes, let, let our minutes please reflect that. And, uh, we had standard agenda items, uh, most of the meeting, uh, was basically welcoming, welcoming me as a planning commission member. Uh, there was fundraising events that we talked about, which are very successful. Uh, Trek or Treat took up a lot of our meeting about scheduling, uh, getting candy, and the people that had provided candy, uh, they talked a little bit about the Berrin County jail crew and the process of them helping out with clearing trees and working on the trail. And then also, you'll see, there's, uh, Eagle Scout Project that's involved on the trail. Uh, additionally, they talked about the Tree Committee a little bit, and how successful that, that is. Uh, there were some benches that are going to be bought and ordered for, um, placement on the trail. And then our next meeting is... And then our next meeting is November eighteenth at seven P M. Great group of people, I would add, great group of people.
Great.
Quick question, so Peter Lacy found four more?
He did, yes, mhm. That was interesting.
How did he, what, what's, tell me a little bit about that, I'm very interested in that. So how did he discover that, or?
Basically, well, as you know, he's, he's pretty busy with Buchanan's history.
Sure.
He delves in that almost constantly. And somehow he discovered those four additional mills. I don't know if it's through historical records, pictures, or what.
Did he find remnants at all?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think it's mostly just photographs.
About the location, it's okay.
Right.
Cool.
That is interesting, though, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, because I used to roam that creek a lot when I was a kid.
Again, great group of people. It was great to sit in on that, on that committee.
Do you remember those mills when you were planning? She said you were old, so.
You know, I miss Dick Dole. I really miss him.
Sorry.
I think the dinosaurs were in the way.
Yeah. Yeah, Fran and I used to run over those mills all the time down there, Fran.
And we're fortunate tonight, we actually have a member of the Friends of the Tree. I need to really learn these names.
Buchanan Tree Friends.
Buchanan Tree Friends. What is your, do you have an office on the Buchanan Tree Friends?
I'm the chair.
Chair, okay.
Yeah.
All right, Ralph, if you don't mind giving us a brief summary?
No, not at all.
All right.
Stated before, I'm Richard Martin, and I've been on the Buchanan Tree Friends for this month, it'll be four years. We have been planting trees in the city. The new city administration has been tremendously helpful. Thank you. From having the DPW to dig the holes for us, they purchased an auger. They're very responsive to our questions, and they, they help us out very much. We recently had, on October sixteenth, we planted with a not-for-profit named Relief. Nothing to do with the pot shop in Niles. But this is a, an organization that is a not-for-profit, which supervises plantings in communities to reduce runoff, which makes the St. Joe River a nicer place. And we planted forty-eight trees, we had a hundred and nine vol, a hundred and nine registered volunteers. In the Chronicle, they said up to a hundred and fifty volunteers, but we, we passed out T-shirts when people registered, and we passed out just about a hundred and ten T-shirts, so I think that's a pretty accurate number. There, there are some that showed up without registering. We also plant tribute trees, and we have planted a tribute tree since the October sixteenth planting. That gives us ninety-nine trees that we have planted now in four years. And as I said, this administration is much more helpful to us, so we're gearing up to plant a lot more each year. We just ordered another twenty-six trees, which will be probably received in the next week. We have orders for fifteen of those as tribute trees. And Fernwood has agreed to allow us to keep some trees down there, at, at their location. So if we have, it, it used to be if somebody wanted to order a tribute tree, we'd say, well, the nursery digs in the spring or in the fall. We'll wait and see what they've got available. Now, if somebody wants a tribute tree, we're going to be able to take them down to Fernwood and say, all right, we've got, I think we have six down there now, and we're going to put ten more down there. We've got sixteen trees you can look at and see if you like any of those, and we can do it right away, which will help everybody out. So I guess that's, that's about it. We plan to meet tomorrow. We are now expecting to be overseen by the plan commission, but we don't feel that you're going to need to do anything, because we're going to do everything right.
How many, how many members do you have?
We have nine members. Jerry Flanner has been helping us out a lot, so let's say nine and a half. He's not an, he's not an official member, but he's, he's been coming to the meetings and he's helping out a lot.
I'll let him know that he's a half and a half.
So I saw an email about like third times the charm, about a grant related to a tree inventory for the city.
Yes. We have applied to the last three years to a, to the DNR for a grant for completing an inventory of all the street trees in Buchanan. It's estimated there's going to be about eighteen hundred on this inventory. Definition of a street tree, at least my definition, is something within the city right-of-way. Either between the sidewalk and the road, or within thirty-one or thirty-two feet of the center of the road.
So not including the parks, unless they're in the road right-of-way adjacent to a park?
I don't believe that they will be included, no.
Okay.
However, at the dog park, I can tell you what trees are there, because we have planted them all. At the common, we've planted eleven or twelve trees down there. We've planted all the trees in Victory Park, we've planted a couple of trees in, what's the one between Maine and, that's right behind your building, Ralph.
Oh, Ravish?
Ravish.
Ravish Park, yes, we planted a couple in Ravish Park. And we recently did about thirty trees at the middle school.
Right. And I saw that Davy Resource Group would be conducting the inventory?
Yes, they will be. This is a matching grant, but we've had discussion with the city prior to this about the cost of it, and what, what might be incurred. We have had the, the Masons have promised us five hundred dollars toward that matching grant, which will help a lot.
Awesome.
Any other questions?
Guys are very productive, awesome to see how engaged you all are. I mean, there's that, I know Sean was there, I was there, I think I saw Ralph there.
Mhm.
Just an awesome turnout and great event, nice day to do it, so. I was thrilled, I hope you all were thrilled and proud about that.
Well, Sean didn't know about it until the night before. Man, I've got a funny story to tell. One of the people that was there with his wife and child, thirteen-year-old son, said now, when you, he was telling his son, he said, when you pick out who you're going to go work with, look at their shoes. Make sure they're old nasty-looking shoes, because if they're shiny like that guy, you don't want to work with him.
That's funny.
I saw him schlepping water. He was actually doing a lot of work.
I know he did. I just had to give him a hard time.
Yeah.
Good to know.
All right. Thanks, Richard.
Okay, you're welcome.
I'm that guy now.
Great. So I'm, I'm planning to attend your meeting tomorrow, that was at River St. Joe.
I, I don't know your name.
Jason Leeds.
Jason Leeds.
Yeah.
Boy, they meet at fun places.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the deal with that?
It's going to be a long time.
Where was your meeting at?
Right here.
That's where the trail, trail people meet. They know how to do it.
Trail people met here. Do they?
All right, next is.
I just might go to the meeting tomorrow night.
It's a public meeting, it might be at the, somewhere else, but it's a public meeting. There's no old business that I'm aware of, so we'll move past that, on to first item of new business. Applications submitted by, for the rezoning that we had the public hearing on earlier. So I think the, probably the first way to start out with this is to have the zoning administrator present. You don't need to read it word for word, but give us the summary, a briefing on your staff report. Anything pertinent that, any background that got us to this point? That'd be great.
The, so actually, I've been talking to Mr. Carter and Mr. Carrigan for actually seven months. Because when, when I first started, they came to me with this concept, and I had to make a determination of what the existing zoning was at that point. As we all know, and as we've heard again tonight, it was used at a certain point for perhaps many decades as a commercial property, a gas station, a grocery store, a service corner for the neighborhood, et cetera. Because of some factors, perhaps it was environmental cleanup, perhaps it was disinvestment. The property remained vacant for a period of years. And what that does in our zoning code is it causes that zoning to be reverted back to the zoning of that district. So what we have here is a, in, you know, talking to the petitioner at that point, this is again several months ago. He was, he bought it under the impression that it was commercial. He paid, thought he paid taxes on it, and the fact that it was commercial. Only now is, perhaps is there an economic opportunity that he's pursuing. He contacted my office. I did notify him that I believe, that I made a determination that it went back to residential zoning. At that point, he prepared a, well, actually, at that point, we went through a kind of a several-week period of trying to find locations for Mr. Carrigan, who's, I believe, now operating in another city. He desires to come back to Buchanan, where he does business here. And Mr. Carter prepared a petition for a variance request. And that was put forth to you guys on January's, or, August twenty-sixth.
It was, went to the board of.
Went to the Z B A.
Yeah, the board of.
Correct, because that's the, correct, according to the state ordinance, that's where the variance request goes. We had a discussion that evening about their goals, and ultimately, there was a unanimous approval of his variance to operate a commercial kitchen, although in the discussion that ensued at that meeting, they wanted more than that, they wanted essentially a restaurant operation. Because of the fact that we had already advertised the notice to all the property owners, I think we, the consensus was, you know, we, we have to work with what we have. And we all walked out of that room with the approved variance. But there was also discussion that they would come back and perhaps make another request to get what they really want to achieve is to operate a restaurant and to operate a commercial kitchen. So I think that evening, there was discussion about maybe which way the, the right way would be to go. Could it be a variance request, an expansion of a variance request? Could it be a rezoning request? And there was some discussion, I think that evening. I then had some discussion with you, Mr. Chairman, about it, I think late October. And it was just kind of like, well, you could go one way or the other. And ultimately, I presented both options to Joe, and he decided to go the rezoning option. It's kind of two, two ways to skin the cat, if you will. So he prepared the application, and that's what we have in front of us. Application submitted by Joe Carter with the rezoning of the property located at one oh one Terracoup slash four twenty-one Front Street. Many, there are many addresses in Buchanan that have dual addresses, and I tend to refer them as otherwise known as. We have that come up a few times. And he essentially wants to do the same thing, operate the existing residential as is today, and then operate the commercial garage area as a commercial restaurant use. And so we framed the request as a rezoning from the existing R one residential zoning to C one commercial zone. That's what we have before us tonight. We sent out the notices per statute and ordinance to the adjacent property owners of three hundred feet. We advertised as required in the publication, and we had the public hearing tonight, which means anytime after the public hearing, the body can make a determination. So I have my report in front of us that I'm going to go through briefly. Essentially, the plan, plan commission has two options to consider regarding the requested rezoning. They shall conduct the public hearing and then submit to the city commission. Tonight is a recommendation from the plan commission. It will ultimately go to the city commission, that's how a rezoning works. Had we gone the variance route, we would have faced other standards and hurdles, so to speak, but it could have been approved that night. After weighing pros and cons, we wanted the rezoning, so if this body does vote to recommend approval, it will ultimately go to the city commission.
Rich, could I interrupt you just one second?
Yeah.
Currently, our packets include the staff report, however, we don't have the application or the site information
Okay.
in our packets. Is it possible to have those printed out?
Yeah.
I don't know, you guys don't have that either, right?
Sorry, I thought you guys had all that.
No, sir. I think we've all viewed it, be it email, however, we don't have it in our packets in front of us.
So let, let me, do you want me to stop?
No, no, sir, please continue.
All right, so there's two options in front of you. One is to make a recommendation for approval for the rezoning, or two, recommendation for the denial. I cited the ordinance sections that basically state that an amendment can originate by either the city, the plan commission, or the property owner. In this case, it's the property owner. The amendments, anytime after the public hearing, the plan commission can make the recommendation. That recommendation goes on to the city commission, and the recommendation shall be made in confor, conformance with the city Buchanan Master Comprehensive Plan and such standards that are contained in the ordinance. So my staff report is kind of in the italics here, and I'll just go through that. The former service station building operated for decades as a commercial use, but has been vacant for a number of years. Reverted back to residential zoning, as I explained. Variance recently was granted for the property, allowing limited use for a commercial kitchen. We talked about the last hearing and this hearing. The commercial portion may not be appropriate for residential redevelopment in its current, in its form. The proposed use is a creative solution to maximize the potential, hence benefiting the community. And we really did cite a couple of reasons why it would be a benefit. In addition to it historically being this service center for the neighborhood, gas station, grocery store. If it comes back to be so, it would be in line with the city's objectives to encourage food operated and related services. The notion of having a commercial service center in a neighborhood goes back to kind of the advent of traditional towns and early traditional cities. The benefits were a shopping location with convenience, supporting local business, encouraging bicycle and pedestrian traffic, reducing the need to drive a vehicle, and delivering a service component. There was discussion that Mr. Carrigan could expand from a restaurant to offer some service components that would be beneficial to the neighborhood as well. I do cite the recently adopted Master Plan to, which includes the survey we did, where over four hundred and fifty residents outlined their desire for more dining options in Buchanan in and around the downtown area. And additionally, the Buchanan Master Plan twenty twenty-one contemplates the implementation of residential mixed use, which again encourages little epicenters of commercial perhaps at key neighborhood corners, such as the corner of Terracoup and Westford Street. And I cited that reference on page seventy-eight of the document. And I did go through and apply the standards of approvals from our zoning ordinance. These were the same approvals in the first section that were findings for. These were the same approvals in the first section, uh, that were findings for your variance approval, your unanimous variance approval, uh, A through F. Additionally, I cited section nine point oh-one, which the intent, um, of the neighborhood commercial district is, uh, to establish a district in which the principal use of land is to provide for retailing of commodities, classes of convenience, goods, groceries, drugs, furnishing of personal services, et cetera. So those are my findings. The decision is, is in the hands of the Plan Commission. They should make, uh, whether to approve or deny with findings of fact, uh, that would support any decision making. That concludes, concludes my report.
All right. Questions for, for Mr. Chairman, Richard?
So it's, it's all on one lot that we even though it's got two addresses?
Yes.
Just a couple of notes. In the zoning ordinance, there are no, I could not find it for recommendations on rezonings, any standards for that?
You're right.
So I, I saw that you chose to throw some in there.
I did.
Just thought that was helpful rather than a requirement?
Yeah, I did because I was astonished that there are none.
We astonish you every day with things that aren't in there.
And I additionally, I did do a lot of research at the state level and could not find any standards either. Everything really goes back to the master, the comprehensive plan.
Right.
And really drawing references to that in the character of your community for a rezoning.
So one thing that was, uh, noticed and I tipped off in my email. The, uh, the new future land use plan that we just adopted does not envision that corner as being one of those neighborhood commercial hubs. How, how do you reconcile those two things with your favorable recommendation?
I think it maybe was just overlooked. I mean, you can't, I, the, um, you can't be a hundred percent right on every single parcel in a future land use map. I think you, I defaulted to the spirit, uh, of the language in our zoning ordinance that does want to create these neighborhood commercial opportunities. And I mean, there's not a lot left of them. They're pretty valuable. You know, you look at quarters like, um, Pit Stop, you know? Those are, those are relics. And, you know, if economic improvement comes back, those are extremely valuable assets to neighborhoods.
You're talking about the party store?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
It's a relic to me.
Yeah, so I mean, to me, it, it really is, uh, an opportunity. You know, more and more people want the services in their neighborhoods. You know, even a few people that talked tonight, um, and I think that, uh, that was a, a theme in our master plan.
Well, I, and I think somebody spoke to that at the previous meeting too. Some, there were people speaking in favor of being able to walk to a restaurant in the neighborhood and having another option at the previous meeting.
And we have those conditions, what, north and south on Redbud, right? Don't we have a mixed use or a neighborhood commercial in those areas?
Yeah. And, you know, we did have that discussion and we made some changes, maybe we should have, you know, contemplated that change.
You just go a few doors down on Front Street and you've got the flower shop. Yeah. I mean, that's right there and it's commercial and it's, it's the same concept. I mean, it's the same idea, they live there, they work there and, I mean, right next door. Yeah, I remember, that was the witch shell growing up, so. That was, it's been there forever and it, it always was commercial. And realistically, what are you going to do? Tear down the garage and tear down everything and, and say build a house there?
That would be my argument again, you know, against voting against it is what, if you don't do this now, what, what are we going to do? We're going to sit and stare it empty for, I mean, what else?
It's just gonna, you know what, if you don't do something now, it's going to come back again in two years or three years because it's still going to be there and it's still going to be empty.
Well, having been on the Board of Zoning Appeals, I can say there, there is a, another pathway. There were two options presented. One was a use variance, which there was one granted for the commercial kitchen. The other option was a rezoning to accommodate what the applicant was seeking to do. So this isn't the only route, it is one route and it was the one that we get preferred to pursue at this time. Just, I just want to clarify, there, it's not just the all or nothing, there, there is another path to get there.
Steve, you know, I, I thought, and this might just be me, but I thought the consensus was that he does want it brought back as a rezoning.
Well, the ZBA did find that there were unique characteristics of the structure. That, uh, obviously you got a structure that is not really residential, grafted onto a residential building. So it's a really tough kind of situation. There's really not a clean pathway to get to, to accommodate that, so.
And the whole front yard per se is concrete, right? I mean, there's.
It is a corner lot, so depending on how we define front with two different addresses facing two different streets.
Right.
So, um, one of the front lot, front yards is, is paving, yeah.
You know, one thing I think about is the, you know, the economic argument. If things were always economically sound, it'd probably still be an operating commercial. It just seems intuitive that it would go back to commercial. I think there's evidence in our master plan that support findings, uh, came a strong way.
Okay.
And a rezoning, in my mind, I know you're concerned with spot zoning, so am I, I hate that. However, I mean, this isn't a zoning for industrial, it's a zoning for mostly commercial, uh, neighborhood, commercial neighborhood, so.
And it falls into the, like, like Rich says, the spirit of what we're trying to do anyway. I mean, we're, we're trying to encourage that anyway. Uh, along, especially along our main thoroughfares. If this were someplace off of Cayuga in the back area, maybe different consideration. But this is one of the main thoroughfares through town.
So Rich, did you, uh, I see in here you didn't address or make any kind of comments about the issue of spot zoning? Do you have anything to add about that?
Yeah, I don't believe in spot zoning. I think that, you know, in the, our master plan has specific language about creating these neighborhood commercial centers. And, um, this is what this is, it, it is, it walks like a duck, it talks like a duck, it is a duck, it's a commercial quarter. And, and to me, it's, uh, it can't be anything else. And I, I don't think it's spot zoning. I think that you, when you add in the fact, the decades of history that it was commercial, the fact that it only reverted because of vacancy, uh, the fact that there's, uh, we cite support in our master plan, the fact that nobody's against, spoke against it, only people have spoken in favor of it. I think that all those things add up to, it's not spot zoning and it is, uh, could support finding, it supports strong findings. And if it was ever challenged, we could cite those.
Okay.
So help me out here, Jason, if this is in fact rezoned, if it's voted favorable, do they have to come back with a site plan then?
No. The only reason they need to come back is if they
Change foot.
made changes to the parking area, made changes to the building footprint in any way. Either one of those things would trigger a, a site plan. I will say though, if it's a small extension, uh, there's that threshold where it's less than some percent, it can just be approved by the zoning administrator, wouldn't need to come to us. But with such a small building, it wouldn't take much of change to, uh, throw it into a site plan review.
Because, I mean, they've included a somewhat of a rough site plan indicating parking. However, I don't know if that's actually designated at this point.
Yeah, I don't believe for a rezoning that the site plan is.
No, I'm not saying right now, I'm just saying in the future.
I, I think what they're saying is that if it gets rezoned, they're going to go further into the planning stage of this thing. And that'll determine whether it throws in the site plan or throws it away or not.
Okay.
Because that, that's what I heard at least.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Rich?
Under C1, I, and you're, uh, what is that, how does that affect the residential under C1?
So a C1 zoning, uh, I can just, you want to hear like the list of permitted uses that would be allowed in C1?
Yeah. You don't have it memorized?
I do not have it memorized. So uses permitted by right, section nine zero-two, retail, personal service and related commercial establishes, establishments, semicolon, restaurants, professional service and other offices, assembly halls of schools, churches and other organization, financial institutions, including automated teller machines, group homes, including nursing child, adult foster care facilities, not elsewhere regulated, florist and greenhouse commercial businesses, funeral home, funeral furniture stores, city and government buildings, lodging facilities, bed and breakfast, lodges, fraternal, labor and social organizations and the accessory uses thereto. And then, um, also allowed is residential dwelling units, not located on the first floor, and essential services. And then you have special uses that are allowed in C1 include, um, utility transmission facilities, not essential services and this vague other uses when determined similar to that laundry list that I read earlier. So it doesn't include things like grocery stores, um, gas stations, um.
Well, what I'm getting to is can the residents still be used as a residence in the back if they change it to C1?
The first floor dwelling unit would be a legal non-conforming use. So they could continue doing it, but it would be some.
It would be illegal non-conforming because it exists.
Because it exists. Now, if you wanted to expand it, then there'd be limitations on that.
He's aware of that.
Okay.
We discussed it.
Okay.
I was not, I, I don't know where I was, I think I was sick.
Vacation.
All right, um, there be no further questions for Rich? Um, entertain a motion to act on the request?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning of the property submitted by the applicant for the address on the application, two addresses on the application.
Would you like to include the staff report as the supporting findings of fact for the recommendation? Okay, is there support?
I'll support.
Okay, motion support. It's now, uh, any additional further discussion amongst ourselves? Just for the sake of transparency, I did have some discussions, as was mentioned with Rich, uh, with me about like which way to go and we talked about the two paths. I did raise a concern at that time that, um, you know, spot zone is a concern. Either one has similar hurdles to overcome as far as like, uh, the zoning ordinance goes. And, you know, I was in favor of going after review of the issues. I thought maybe that the, um, variance route was maybe the stronger route because it got totally around the issue of, of spot zoning and the, um, the ZBA had already found that the building itself had unique characteristics that warranted a variance consideration, so. I shared with you, you know, even though there's no opposition, I am concerned about the precedent setting of a single parcel, completely surrounded as an island amongst other uses. That the next time somebody comes before us that's maybe not, not part of, is clearly part of where we're trying to go with the, the neighborhood center, they're going to point to this and say, hey, well, you did this here. I'm a little bit concerned about that. So, um, you know, I shared the information about spot zoning and there was some questions to ask about spot zoning. So some of the questions, uh, this was from the MSU extension that I pulled up from their land use planning portal. Had to do with, you know, is it a, there's several factors, it's not just one clear thing that goes into small zones. And this one ticked the boxes, so it's, I'm still really kind of concerned about the spot zone issue. You know, it's small in size, it's a single parcel, single landowner. It's a use that's inconsistent with the uses around it. And the fact that the master plan, which we just adopted, is a future land use map that shows as a residential. And I would, I would have preferred probably after further consideration of all of the issues and, and digging deeper into the spot zone issue. You know, I felt like maybe the use variance was, and I did, uh, conclude our text when I was, you know, speaking with them that, you know, I felt like the variance route was probably the stronger way to go. But I can see the merits of both, both ways. It's, it's a little really tough, this is like a, a square trying to be fit into a circle as far as the zoning framework goes.
I, I think you can, can take a, I think you can take a text like that, uh, that you got from Michigan State. Where, where was that from, State of Michigan, Michigan State?
MSU extension, planning, uh, yeah, land use planning.
They lost to Purdue for God's sakes.
Well, it just means they can't play football, doesn't mean they don't know, uh, they're not very intelligent about the.
Anyway, I think that you can read something like that and they're, they're absolutely right. But I don't think you can fit that into the character and the sphere of what's on that corner. That's just my opinion. Because I grew up seeing what that was, it's always been commercial. It's, you've got commercial down the road, what happens when that flower shop closes and it doesn't open back up for five years? We're going to do, say the same thing there, you're going to make somebody live in a greenhouse?
So it's not as if it's a purely a house that we're going to spot zone so they can run something out of a home?
It's not a house.
And it's not, and it's, it's something that existed there for years. It, it's been, it was operating as a business longer than it has not been operating as a business. So that would be my argument there. Its location on a corner says something for it. Because it's on a good intersection, it's on an intersection of Terracoup. Back a hundred years ago, Terracoup probably used to cut all the way through town and tied to River Street. So the Indians could cross the river, so. On the old bridge.
Not, not that it matters what my opinion is, but I would, I would agree that I think the historical use of the property, um, alone is a, is a really good argument against the spot zoning.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, like I say, I think you can, you can pick up text in, in that, I totally agree with everything you read there. I totally agree with everything that's said there. But I think when you look at a situation like this, you've got to really look at the other issues that are involved in it and the uniqueness of it, the history of it, uh, the location of it. You're not just plopping this thing down and pulling it out of the sky and dropping it. So I don't really consider it spot zoning.
I think the structure itself plays into it also. I mean, that is not a house, obviously it's got a house behind it, but.
Well, and, and if you try to take the structure down and create a house, now you're on a corner lot and look at your setbacks. You've got two front yards. And, and our zoning ordinance is not very clear about that either. I did find a zoning ordinance that was very clear on that. Because I'm doing a corner lot right now up in Silver Creek Township. They've got a good corner lot, zoning ordinance.
Well, my point is, it doesn't lend itself to residential, that, that structure.
I totally agree.
Good, I, I appreciate that discussion. I think you made some important arguments that I, I think I can buy into there. A good rationale, I mean, that's, that's, you made a good case.
But again, I agree with you totally on, on the spot zoning.
I, I do too, but I.
I'm behind you a hundred percent.
If, I think, whenever you're looking at something that's spot zoning, every individual, there's a lot of facets that help you make the decision whether it's spot zoning or not spot zoning. And in this case, I think there's more on the side of rezoning it than considering it being spot zoned and we're doing something out, that's out of the ordinary here.
All right. Any further discussion amongst the group?
No, sir.
All right, with that, we will, um, were you able to capture the motion? Okay, great, um, we'll do a voice vote on this one? Go ahead and call the roll?
Madison?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Parker?
Support.
Yes.
Motion's carried. So we've made a favorable recommendation on your request. It now goes to the city commission. This is actually like a legal change to the official map. So they get the final say and I think there's maybe another hearing because it's changing in ordinance.
Doesn't that, there's not a hearing required.
There's not another hearing required, just a, an action by the city commission?
Yeah.
Okay, so they'll be taking up your application, um, I assume at their next meeting?
Next meeting.
Okay.
A week from Monday. A week from Monday.
Can we be present for that?
Absolutely.
I would suggest.
Seven o'clock.
Good luck. Alright, um, moving on to the next topic. Got too many papers, I've lost my agenda.
Consider recommending applicants to the planning commission?
Oh yes, thanks, I, we'll go from memory.
Thank you guys.
So um, we had two applications, um, one was a re-application from, uh, from Dan. And I saw that the city manager made in a, a administrative decision. That that application had already been acted on previously.
She did, she did um, present minutes from a previous meeting where we voted unanimously to not set him on the planning commission, yes.
So based on that, I interpreted that we didn't need to consider another re-recommendation one way or the other on that.
Well, I, I think that, that you would deduce that, but she wouldn't want you to make that call from her recommendation.
Well, if we're gonna consider it, was Dan invited to come here in the same way that?
I thought he was.
I, I mean, I thought he was gonna be here too, he was.
Okay, he was.
He was texting me first thing this morning, wanting to know why he wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, I just wanna make sure no one told him that, no, we're not, that the city's manager's already determined it's been acted on once.
No, I don't believe so.
I told him we were meeting at River St. Joe.
You know, I, I gotta be honest, I'm not, I don't know.
Well, I just wanna go on the public record that, um, if he were here, I would've given him an opportunity in the same way we're giving the opportunity here. Couple other things that I wanted to come out tonight for his benefit was I looked up the um. The city or the state requirements as well as the city. Uh, city ordinance for the planning commission. And there were a couple of things that came into play that I thought he, he would benefit from knowing. One is, you're not able to be a member of the planning commission if you are seeking a public office. So if he, I know he's politically involved, if he wants to run again for office, that would not make him eligible to be on the planning commission. A second thing is, he's already a member of the zoning board of appeals and should he obtain a spot as a member on the planning commission. The law on the ZBA is only one member of the planning commission represents on the ZBA. And currently that position's being held by me, so either he or I would need to go, we'd need to go down to one. And that might put his role there at risk, depending what the vote of the planning commission was. So I wanted him to be aware of both those things and make sure that was on the record, um, just to make sure he's, he's aware and we're being transparent. So, having done that, we'll now ask, uh, Richard Martin, uh, we've already met you, you've already introduced yourself. But um, it's my recommended practice when we're doing this, I like to have the applicants just come and talk to us a little bit. Uh, maybe your bio, your background, confirm a few things about you. I will say one, in the state law for planning commissions, it says that the planning commission shall be representative of important segments of the community. Such as the economic, governmental, educational and social development of the local union of government in accordance with the major interests. As they exist in the local union of government, such as agriculture, natural resources, recreation, education, public health, government, transportation, industry, commerce. The membership shall also be representative of the entire territory of the local union of government. So with that in mind, before you give your bio, I wanted you to just get some facts and some basics out of the way. So you are a, a resident of the city of Buchanan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's good, uh, next thing is, um, where in town do you live, just to kinda get a sense of the geographic representation? North end.
Six houses from the city line.
Okay, um, I, I think that's great because we don't have anybody on the board from the north side of town. I live near Swim Funeral Home and you live?
Right down the street from Mr. Martin.
Oh, so you're a North Ender as well?
I am, I'm right, I'm right next to the middle school actually, I consider myself a West sider.
A West sider, because you're west of me? Like, how do you know you're west side? Okay, from the west side, um, so that's good, I appreciate that. And then, um, obviously you're on the tree board, um, so any other, with that kind of in mind, what I read, if you could tell us a little bit about your background? And then also what your interest is in the planning commission and what you might bring to the table as far as representing those factors.
Okay, um, well, my background, um. I have a degree in forestry from Michigan State University. I have worked in East Lansing for the forest service and I worked in encampment Wyoming for two and a half years for the forest service. From there, we moved back here, that was forty-one years ago, and we've been at this address ever since. I've got, I had a license as a practi, licensed practical nurse. I've worked in eight different hospitals around the country doing that, uh, I have a computer background. I was the chief information officer for the area agency on aging up in St. Joe. I've got three kids who live in town, all of my grandkids live in town, all, all of my children and all of my grandchildren live in town. About like Lou Gehrig said, the luckiest man in the world.
That's fantastic.
I was born and raised in Niles, I'm the black sheep of the family, cause all my siblings still live over there. And I was the one that moved five miles away, um, but I love Buchanan, um. All of my kids went through the school system, I have a son who's a teacher in the school system, my daughter is, uh. I just say she's a mucky muck, I don't know what her title is, she works for Honor Credit Union. And then I have a son who, um, does remote, uh, computer work. For a company out of Calgary, I think it is.
Great, that's a really diverse kinda background.
Yeah, uh, I was in the army, uh, spent three years and eight months doing that and. Oh, I was on the planning commission back in the late seventies.
Wow.
I spent a couple of years on the planning commission, um, I was a business owner downtown ACS Computer Services. I had a friend who said, Richard, I've got a great name for a company, let's start a business, and that's not a good reason to start a business. It was applied common sense, and we did not. That's my history.
Alright.
One question, are you older than me?
Uh, I think so.
Good.
I, I'm, I'll be seventy-three next month.
How long did you serve on a plant commission previously?
Two years.
Two years?
Here in Buchanan?
Yes.
Okay.
And you wanna do it again?
It was a little different back then.
Well, we, we were contacted a couple of months ago by the then, um, city clerk. Telling us that, uh, we were going to be working under the auspices of the plan commission. And that we should have someone who's on the tree commission, on the plan commission and vice versa. So I volunteered.
Fantastic.
Good.
And I guess we're, um, looking to see if I'm approved to be on the commission, um. I would like to be, um, I, I've, I heard you talking about the comprehensive city plan. I had located that on the internet and I'm about a quarter of the way through it now. Haven't found out anything real exciting, but.
You're not to the good part yet.
No, it's mostly demographics is where I'm at right now.
The action list, so that's what you're signing up for, when you get to the action item list in the back.
That's, that's me.
Great, thank you.
Alright, appreciate you coming and sharing with us and for your interest. Alright, so ultimately, appointments to the planning commission are done by the city commission, but they've asked for our input. So at this time, um, I'll entertain a motion for a recommendation.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to recommend that Richard Martin be, uh, approved as, as one of the, uh, being accepted to the planning commission.
I'll support.
Alright, motion and support, comments, further discussion?
I like his diverse background, I like the fact that he's been here so long, I like the fact that his kids are here and they've got careers locally. I think those are the types of people we need on here, uh, obviously very well educated, even though he went to Michigan State, I'm a Michigan grad, so. You're always gonna get those from maybe, especially.
You don't have to sit next to this guy if you make it up here.
Especially since you guys beat us in football. No, that's, uh, you've got a very diverse background and I like that and, and, uh. Yeah, I just, uh, I'd like to.
One other thing I forgot to mention, um, I'm on the, the board of seats there.
Good. Good.
We should also know, he has a long history of volunteering with the city Buchanan.
Excellent, anything else? Alright, with that, um, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to recommend appointment of Richard Martin to the planning commission, to the city commission. We'll go ahead and do a voice vote on this one, call the roll please.
Please?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I understand that it will go before the city commission?
Correct.
And I should be at that meeting probably?
I think that'd be, be good if you're willing to do that, it's not required, so, yeah. Thanks again for coming tonight. Alright, next is, uh, we're kinda nearing the end of our agenda, so at this time, if there's anybody in the public that would like, uh. Make a comment on any non-agenda items, no one from the back row? That's usually where those comments come from, so that's why I'm asking.
It's rare that Norma doesn't have something she wants to lay on us.
Okay, um, do we, do you remember her name and address? Okay, no need. Alright, thank you. Alright, next is the, um. Community development director and zoning administrator comments, I always like to make sure at the planning commission, we refer you by that hat too.
Uh, just one comment, Mister President, um, as you guys know, I am in the process of being certified. With the State of Michigan redevelopment ready's community program and I'm just finishing that. One of the good things about it is I'm on these calls with planning directors and redevelopment directors from around the state of Michigan. Like thirty or forty of them at a time, and there's a chat feature. And so, um, one of the things that I brought up was have any communities worked with a, of our size. Or comparable nature, work with a good consultant to, uh, help them overhaul their zoning ordinance. And I'm compiling that information, um, I've gotten several good consultants. There is a funding mechanism by redevelopment ready communities to fund this type of project. So Heather and I have discussed that we wanna prioritize this, it's, it's a big bite to bite off. It's not a, it's, it's a long-term project, but having new, uh, membership and, uh, on the commission. And, um, in working with, with you guys, uh, I think this is something that we're ready, we would be ready to tackle at this point. And we can talk about which way to do it, some communities, uh, set up a steering, steering committee. Um, some communities have the plan commissioner, city commission have a subcommittee, but, uh, somebody's gotta drive the boat. And, um, so it's something that I'll be reporting to you again when I have a short list of, uh, consultants to work with. This is something that you need a consultant for, uh, we wanna, we don't wanna rewrite the book, reinvent the wheel. We wanna take a great plan and customize it under a sort of great zoning ordinance. It's, it'll be a cool project, that's all I got tonight.
Okay.
But we do need to work on our zoning ordinance, right?
Well. Yeah, I, I.
No, it's totally fine.
I, I kinda think the whole thing.
It's good for another thirty years, what are you talking about Ralph?
I think the old one needs to go in the trash and we need a new format, we need a new zoning ordinance in general. And we, but we need the old one as reference to anything specific to this community.
Yeah, we don't wanna create a whole mess of like non-conforming things that don't match what was previous yet.
Right, exactly, so we've got, yeah, we've got a, but, but in the way that it's done, I, I think it could be reformatted, clarified. Like I say, I've been going through a lot of zoning ordinances lately and there are a lot, a lot of them out there that are simpler, uh, more specific, easier to read. Very clear in nature, I can keep going.
Yeah, we need more visuals and, and the new one too.
Oh, absolutely.
To the extent that it's feasible to have visual graphics, yeah.
There's gotta be a template we can get started with, right?
Yeah.
Well, depending on the consultant, he'll bring one.
Alright, thank you, um, that takes us then to, uh, planning commissioner comments, we'll go left or right today, Ralph?
Uh, I think I have him, thank you.
Alright. Kevin?
I would like to welcome Kaylee, Kayla?
Kayla.
Kayla?
Cala.
Cala?
She's from California.
California, I'd like to welcome California to the administration. So far, you're doing a great job, it's only been an hour and twelve minutes, twenty-one minutes, but what I see, great job. Uh, Richard, I'd like to welcome you on, I mean, we've met before, I've heard your name around town a lot and, and, uh, I know you do a lot around the community. And you're the type of people that, the type of person that we really need on here.
Alright, uh, I wanna thank you all for the good discussion on, uh, the rezoning application. While I never make up my mind advance, I was very concerned about the spot zoning thing and there was a lot of very. Sensible rationale discussion, um, and changed my perspective quite a bit, so thank you for that. That's the kinda deliberation I appreciate personally, so, thank you for that Kevin and Ralph. And that's it, all I have, Sean?
I appreciate your thoroughness, again. We can always count on that and, and I appreciate that. And then I just, I wanna say thanks to Richard Martin also, um. And everyone in the room, actually, everyone that's in this room, um, for giving their time and, um, even you, Norma. I mean, I, it's nice to have people who care and, and.
You're right.
Yeah, it's a good room of people right now. That's all I got.
Alright.
And what's another big bite, I mean, that's all we keep getting lately is, here's another big bite we have to take. Uh, you know, if you were at the meeting last night, Ralph's laughing because he knows, it's just everywhere we turn right now, we have big bites for taking. So luckily, we have good people to, with a good appetite.
To weather the storm.
That's right.
We don't wanna miss it, but that's okay.
I don't either and that's probably a good thing, um, alright, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I always like to make that motion, you know, I'll support.
You can pre-print that in your minutes template.
It's always there.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Okay, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Jason, thanks for spending so much time on all that.
Now that this is over, actually, it just dawned on me.